The Crow Public Library and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. For public comments, the city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the Library Board of Trustees on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the Library Board of Trustees may not discuss or take action on issues that are not on the meeting agenda. To assure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into a microphone. I'd now like to ask management analyst Shigenaga to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is the button that's found by clicking on participants. And then clicking on raise hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will only be accepted until the end of the public comment period for that item. I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 7:00 AM cutoff the day of a Library Board of Trustees meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the library meeting. Any comments received after 7:00 AM the day of a meeting will be included in the public comment record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Like the no alternate wall is also in attendance. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
All right. The first item on the agenda is my chairperson's report. It's going to be very brief. Happy New Year to everybody. Both that and the Chinese New Year, they're wonderfully in sync this year. I also wanted to just point out what a wonderful event the open house was. On Saturday, we had a terrific turnout and it was really fun to have all the different library support groups be in attendance and see the really, really good response from everybody here. And the transition from it being a library foundation run event to being a city-run event was notable. And, and, and I thought it was a great success and it was fun to see all the dignitaries in attendance there. And I had a great time at that. That's it. The second item in the agenda is trustee reports. We'll start with our vice chair, Deborah Sedun.
All right, well, the Crane Art Gallery under the dedication of and efforts of Linda Lyons is going very well. The last exhibition.
I'm sorry, if you do the, that comes later in the evening. If you're doing the art gallery, just this is just library work. The others, yeah, it's just.
Two things came across my, my laptop in the last few weeks. And I, one in particular, I found so powerful that I wanted to share it. I won't go on very long. This is another example of why libraries play such a critical role in our lives and have always and will continue to do so. An article on the war in Ukraine. Librarians there have been on the front line. Live, oh, more than 300 libraries there have been destroyed by Russia and countless more school libraries and university libraries. And, well, when this, you know, Ukraine is trying to save their archives, their history, their culture, and apparently according to the article, Russia is trying to wipe it out. And, well, Tufts, Stanford, and one of the European digital centers decided to step up, step forward, and they're helping Ukraine preserve their archives. They've been working around the clock, you know, 18-hour days. They've, they've taken their vacation time and have dedicated to digitizing. When the war began, only 1% of the archives in Ukraine were digital. And now it's, it's more than 50% have been able to be preserved, you know, forever through our technology. And I just felt that that was worth a very important other. And, oh, I did want to add that in Ukraine, the libraries also maintain birth and death records. They maintain marriages and divorce records. It's, it operates differently, obviously, than the US. But these are all, you know, vital. And so now we have a means to see another demonstration of why libraries are important.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sedun. I completely agree. I keep seeing in the news all the time about librarians standing up to fight censorship and preserve values. That's really important. Trustee Chen, do you have any report separate from your, your report you'll be giving later on the foundation?
No.
Nothing else to report? Great. Okay. Anything from our alternates that you wish to share with us, either? Alternate wall or?
I went to the celebration.
Can you step up to the microphone, please? I'm sorry. I forgot.
Yeah, speak. Everybody needs to speak straight into the microphone. That is a meeting requirement. Requirement and our clerk has, our clerk has reminded all of us to ask all of the advisory body members and anybody speaking to get really close. It's like microphone training. Go ahead and pull that, pull the microphone and just pull it closer to you. So you're about two or three inches from the microphone.
I also went to the celebration on Saturday with my kids. And we saw the really fantastic magician who was here. And there was a bunch of stuff for the little ones, which was great. They had a great time. So I just wanted to mention that we were there and it was really fun and very well done.
Great. Thank you so much. Anything was your point? Okay, great. All right. We'll move on to the third item on our agenda is the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report. Can we have a report from Vice Chair Sedun?
Yes. Well, Linda Momo's exhibit concluded on January 2nd. And now, as you can see, and what was up on our, our gallery wall during the open house was a wonderful display panels where you would first see a little of the history. And then you would, the next one would be a timeline and it alternated. And the interesting thing was, I was like a little, you know, bug on the wall. And I was listening to so many people chat about librarians and their first library experiences. And they remember when it was over here and they remember when it was moved there. It was just, you know, heart, you know, uplifting to hear the stories that people shared and their fondness for the library.
Great.
And so, so after that concludes, I got carried away there. Let's see, then we're going to have, oh, yes, a very interesting one will come. After that, it's going to be a mixed media of five artists. It's sort of, I've seen their website. It's, it's rather, I guess, untraditional or eclectic. It's called Studio 1034. And those dates will be February 18th to March 31st. And there'll be on February 25th, the reception. We do have an open slot, we hope to fill. Following that open slot of April 8th to May 19th, we're going to have a Chinese calligrapher from May 27th to July 7th with a reception on June 3rd. And I did look at that work. And I'm hoping that at the reception, he will be sharing, you know, some of the background, how, how became interested in that and how people can better appreciate the calligraphy, the Chinese calligraphy. But I think it'll be an interesting one. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. The fourth item on the agenda is the San Marino Center renovation update report. Since the task force no longer meets and this information is included in the staff report, I suggest we no longer include this item in future meetings. I don't really see a need for it anymore. So, so I'm done. Move on now to the fifth. I mean, I need to vote on that. We can just strike it, I'm sure. The fifth item on the agenda is the Friends of the Crow Public Library Liaison Report. Trustee Derry is not here, so we will skip that for now. She's was celebrating her 94th birthday over the weekend. So, so unfortunately.
The staff liaison is Linda Vera. So Linda, by chance, do you have anything you'd like to add about the? And I'm not sure if Linda went to the meeting. The friends recently did have a meeting prior to the open house. And I can't remember if Linda was able to make it. Linda?
Hi, yes. The, the friends did meet very recently. They are looking at doing an event in March. So they're chugging along, as you know, they received the award, which I'm so sorry, I wasn't able to attend the open house, but here went really well. But yeah, the, the friends right now are mostly focused on doing a dinner. And they're looking at their membership numbers. And they are also looking at how to launch the One City, One Book One City program that they've done in the past. So those are the main things on their plate right now.
The only thing I'll add is we did honor them for anybody in the room who wasn't here. On Saturday, we honored them as the library's volunteers of the year. We got some really good photos and with the mayor along with Assembly Member Fong. So we will be working to try to get that submitted into the San Marino Tribune along with the wonderful photos that we captured from the event. But we certainly would like to, you know, make sure that they get every, every ounce of appreciation out of the city for all of their hard work and dedication and support over the years. 65 years to be exact.
Thank you. The sixth item on our agenda is the San Marino Public Library Foundation Liaison Report. Can we have a report from trustee Chen?
Good morning, everyone. The foundation did not meet last month for a formal meeting. It was a holiday gathering. I missed because I was COVID positive. So, but I heard that we are, well, the foundation's gonna meet in the future every other month because there's no event in the near future. I'm not sure if this has been brought up to the attention of this trustee, the board. Thinking about the Delicious Destination will be moving towards springtime. Has that been? Oh, the thinking was, that's in the thinking process at this moment because there's too many events cramped during the season that normally happens. So trying to ease the burden of people's social calendar. So they're thinking about moving the date potentially in spring. Hopefully that will gather more participation.
Great.
And that's it for this time.
Okay, thank you. The seventh item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Were there any questions from the board on the minutes? We'd like to open up the item for public comments. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. No ones are coming forward. Do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
We do not. Okay. At this time, I'll bring the item back to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions from the board regarding the minutes?
Well, yes, I would just like to comment from the minutes.
Go ahead and pull the microphone.
I'd just like to comment that I was not at the, at the last meeting. So I very carefully looked at the minutes and I was extremely pleased to see that Calvin, well, has been appointed as the liaison from the, from the sitting office. Calvin wears the, the library on his heart and he will be an excellent source and partner for us. So I'm very pleased about that and I wanted to mention it.
Great. Terrific. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes? One of you.
I move.
You moved up.
I moved to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Terrific. Roll call, please.
Trustee Chen.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Sedun.
Yes.
And Chairperson Domire.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The eighth item on the agenda is Director and Library Manager Report. Can we please have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and the Zoom Library Manager Vera?
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Our report begins on page nine of the packet. And as trustee Sedun mentioned, the first aspect of my report I was going to bring forward was at the bottom of the page, new council member liaisons to advisory bodies. And I'm going to invite Council Member Lowe to move up a little bit. And we are so thrilled to have you here. You sort of snuck in and we have somebody in the audience. So for everyone's knowledge, if you did not have a chance to read the report from the packet, on January 11th, at a council meeting, new liaisons were appointed to various advisory bodies throughout the city. And we are so thrilled that Council Member Lowe is our delegate to the library board. And then we also have an alternate, which is the city's current mayor, Steve Talt. So the, the function and the role that they play is that they empower this board to function independently and autonomously. They serve as a point of contact for any questions that city staff can't answer. And they handle any performance issues with trustees. But of course, there would never be any of those. And they will participate in the selection process of new trustees. I know in the past with this model, as a staff liaison to this board, we also have an opportunity to reach to our council advisory body liaisons when there is something I'm not sure how to navigate. So I look forward to giving you a call or reaching out to, to either, if, if we can't answer the question ourselves, we go to the city clerk. Then the next, you know, step would be to contact one of our advisory or liaisons to the board. So welcome and thanks for joining us today. The next brief report I'll give is starting on page 10. And this was a future joint meetings with city council and advisory bodies. Historically, city council and various advisory bodies have managed at least one meeting per year to discuss priorities, goals, and objectives for each of the advisory body groups. Because of COVID and the pandemic and these meetings were discontinued. Now that we're getting back to more normal city operations, the city administration has set that schedule. This year in 2023, they've chosen, actually of the five advisory bodies, they've chosen to move into a 24-month cycle to get those council meetings and advisory meetings calendared. So in 2023, there will be three advisory bodies that will meet. And then 2024, meet jointly with council. And then in 2024, two additional will meet. It was scheduled that the library board would meet with council in 2024. So of the five, they are skipping library board this year as they kind of manage all the various different meetings. So just know that, that is, you know, you will see that there will be joint meetings of other advisory bodies. But we didn't get left out. It's just our, the schedule for this particular group, it will be in 2024 at some point. I do not know the month. They haven't told us. So that, and if you have any, you know, it is something for those of you who are still going to be on the board. It'll be, we will work with the city clerk's office and the city administration to prepare that agenda at that time and make sure we have a very prudent and thoughtful meeting when that time does come. The next item I was going to mention is that San Marino Center. Hopefully you all had an opportunity to read the report. There is a webpage on the city's website that can be found right on the homepage. There's a, there's a, we call it sort of a hot link. And it's trending topics, I believe. So on the right side of the city's homepage, there is a trending topic area. And underneath that is four different, you know, you know, very recent initiatives that the city's working on. And one of them is the San Marino Center, San Marino Community Center renovation. So every month, those reports will be posted on that page. And then the construction management team prepares a written report. So it, if, when you have time, you have to click down a few clicks into that page, which you can actually read all of the updates as it relates to the renovation and the, the construction activity and what happened in the previous month. So if you want to stay apprised of that, please, I'm not going to go into those in detail during this meeting. As the project moves along and we know a little bit more about substantial completion dates, when the city staff will be moving in, things like a, when the grand opening is being planned. None of that has been ironed out quite yet. What I can tell you is it is our hope that we may be looking at, barring any major lead time items or issues, it is our hope and goal that we will be having a re-grand opening celebration in the fall. That is about all we can really narrow down is that. And, and, and if everything moves along quickly, construction doesn't usually work that fast. Maybe we're looking at late summer. So late summer, early fall is right now the general timeline that the city administration and the construction group has agreed upon. So very exciting.
Mayor for question, one of the issues that came up during the open house was furnishings for the new San Marino Community Center and the library. And I was assured based on our participation on the task force that we were going to have things look similar to the two. With that in mind, I know you're involved in procuring those items. Any chance that the patio furniture out here could be replaced?
That is a great question and we are absolutely, that has already been on our radar and part of our discussions that we have a lot of synergy and continuity as it relates to all of the city's assets and equipment and furnishings and fixtures. This furniture out here was beautiful at one point in time. It's antique wood, from what I understand. It has now, 15 years later, I don't know when it was procured. But we are probably not looking at a natural product. We're going to be looking at something that looks similar, but that is going to hold up more of probably a recycled plastic that is going to hold up to the elements, but look visually in that same styling. Not to mention any tables, chairs, things like that, that as a community services campus with two main buildings that will function as core gathering places, main gathering places for the city, that we have really complimentary finishes. And, and that, that, that conversation is literally happening right now. We are in the process of awarding a contract to a, to a vendor who is, I believe the term is business, business furnishings or business finishes. So it's a company, typically office equipment company, that comes in and works with our, you know, our color board. Right? Like in your home, you have a color board. Well, we have a finishes board and they know that we have an existing facility here that needs to be considered on top of the identified finishes, carpet tile, you know, any laminate finishes, paint colors, things like that. So they are being very mindful to ensure that there's, you know, again, complimentary. You know, as we choose this, all these items, that we can seamlessly, you know, interchange this, this equipment and back and forth should we need to. So, and then that, that vendor, when that person gets awarded, will work with the internal city team because we, you know, don't have the staff expertise nor the capacity to manage the level of procurement for the finishes. But we are going to ensure that there is, you know, that it complements, both buildings complement each other.
Thank you.
May I just inject one thing that sort of relates? There were several, there were several individuals who came forward after the presentation in here from eleven, from one to two on Saturday. And of course, they had many wonderful things to say about the, all the fantastic services and that the library provides and, and the how wonderful the staff is. But they did, on this occasion, several people said, you know, as though we didn't know, the library is 15 years old and many of the, you know, the upholstery and carpeting and there's woodwork, there's things that just stand out as looking a little tarnished and, and dated and, and old and needing of repair or replacement. And I promised that I would bring it to your attention.
Thank you. And we are aware, you know, once a building gets beyond really five years, there should be a clear preventative maintenance program. And I know that we do have several of those items you spoke of, upholstery cleaning, all of the, any, any minor and major maintenance items our public works are aware of. Our poker's department, they are in charge of kind of more building maintenance. So we lean on that department to assist us. But we are aware and we are working closely to get those items addressed as soon as possible. I know, you know, nobody wants to hear staff capacity being a challenge. I can tell you it has been, but we, we are under the new direction in our public works department of Amber Shaw, who is our new full-time public works director. So that leadership role and management role is going to, I believe, help us address some of those building and facility needs that have been outstanding for the last several months.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Back to my report. I did mention that we do have an internal project team that is made up of the city administrator's office. It's the, it's the owner team, if you will. And much to my example about the FFNE or the furnishings, fixtures and equipment, that's internal leadership team will be steering the, all those final decisions to allow us to procure whatever we do need to procure. And then they'll, we, I'm on that team. That team is made up of the acting city manager, the public works director, Amber Shaw, the public works manager, myself, as well as the recreation manager, Eddie Kovar. Yes, we are essentially the owners and the, the, the team that gets the. That gets the wonderful opportunity to reopen that facility. So we have began meeting weekly, if not bi-weekly, to start. That transition away from the contractor and then on to kind of uh, that. Maybe sixty ninety days, however long it's going to take. It's like the contractor gives you the keys to the house, right? Then you wouldn't have your open house right away because your house isn't ready yet, right? So we have to furnish the furnish the facility and then determine when we can um, safely open to the public. So that's that team. We are, we are now organized with our final teammate, our public works director position. Amber's been here about a month. She hit the ground running and uh, we are um, more more timely and um, content-rich updates. Uh, for this board as well as our recreation commission board are definitely on their way. Um, it is a, it is a front, front burner initiative that um, you know, it it's um, it's very, very exciting. And um, you know, I I hope to be able to every month now have lots more to report as it relates to the renovation of the new. And I'll, I'll, I'll entertain any questions if anybody has any, you know, that that might have.
About the community.
At the community center right now. Anybody, you know, any questions? Hopefully I've, I've explained kind of where we are at and where the project is. And and um, some of the the larger items that we're working on in preparation to open it.
You're good.
Okay. Uh, the other item that I have, um, I was going to interject the open house. I'm going to thank everybody for coming. Uh, the early numbers that we are estimating, this is a an art, not a science. Um, uh, we, based on our um, our, our door count, we do, we have a counter at the door. Uh, and as you know, the technology there catches everybody going in and out, right? So there's double counting, right? So we, we do have a little bit of a methodology to our madness. But we believe we can safely estimate anywhere between a thousand and eleven hundred. Uh, people in attendance in an open house that that really started at twelve and ended at four. So um. You know, that's really a very exciting turnout from what we understand. That's about what previous years pre-COVID. We would have gotten that many. So uh, we're happy to be back. We're glad everybody's coming out and we um, uh. Really appreciate everybody's support and we um, consider it to be a very successful um, uh, open house celebration. We honored the library's legacy of ninety years. Um, and uh, you know, we we are receiving nothing but. You know, compliments and appreciation from city officials as well as all the other stakeholder groups. So thank you. We thank you for your support and we look forward to years to come, you know, hosting these types of events that really showcase. The importance of the building and the function of our community library. So uh, the other thing, uh, as we move on down here is. We do have our calendar of events. Um, I know one thing that didn't make it on the list. I will give a. Uh, the January twenty sixth is Saturday, the twenty sixth. And my seventh, tw- twenty eighth, uh, Chinese Club, Chinese Club Lunar Lunar Event. That is a city-sponsored event. And it is going to be at Lacy Park from ten to three. It, the primary lead agency is the Chinese Club of San Marino. Uh, celebrating the Lunar New Year. And the city is a very proud sponsor and supporter of the event. Uh, our department, Community Services, will be there with a community outreach booth. Uh, we are anticipating probably. I I'm assuming five hundred, two thousand people. The park is open that day. So if you have time, I understand. Uh, there's lots of wonderful activities planned. Um, and um, yeah, we, we unfortunately. It didn't make our list as a reminder. Um, but the other items on the January, February and March calendar, um. Everything from predominantly library programming as well as the asterisked items that are the recreation division. Our um, comrade division that make up community services. So please mark your calendar for any of those you'd like to attend. And don't forget to wear your badge when you go. So that, those are great. And you know, you you proudly service volunteers and by wearing your badge, it just engages public. In different levels of conversation and uh, um, we appreciate the support on any of the things that we have listed. The operational staff briefing, um, uh, Linda. Uh, if you're still with us, do you have anything you'd like to add, starting on page eleven through the programming, um, any highlights? Linda, are you still with us?
I'm still with you. Hello. Um. I, I think that uh, the winter solstice celebration went really well. Um, kids have been excited to come in and participate in a lot of the different programs that we've been offering. Um, and uh, the same with the comics maker space, um, anything with drawing is always, is always. Um, very much appreciated by the community, um, as well as the flu clinic. Um, it's, it's wonderful to be able to be a community hub and um, offer resources to people and really put them in their paths. So um, I think that those were some of the, some of the main big things from the past couple of months.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for us as it relates to our report, operational report? The other thing I want to add is uh, we are um, our core marketing and communication piece. For community services as well as the library happens to be our community services guide. We produce that full color. Twenty-four page publication four times a year. And it is the bane of our existence internally. To put together uh, the, our guide, uh, it um, is a, it's a labor of love. For many, many contributors internally. Um, so we are currently working on our spring guide. We work. You know, anywhere from three to six months out on that publication. So if you ever have any comments, suggestions. Um, you know, uh, we are always looking to enhance that publication. It is a part of our brand, part of our identity. And uh, we're currently working on the spring guide. I'd like to give a huge shout out to um, Kristin Shigenaga. Who uh, I as the editor and Kristin is our project manager. She works to, to shepherd along. Probably ten to twelve different contributors to that content. Might even be more, you know, with our, with uh, getting the, getting the content from all of our um, community partners. To, to make sure that they have visibility within that publication. So thank you, Kristin. She's doing an amazing job. Uh, that wasn't something when she joined the city team, she knew she was going to be doing as a management analyst. She was a quick study and uh, she's doing a phenomenal job.
I just wanted to say it's, it's a, I look forward to it. Off four times a year. Uh, I keep it. I I I discard a lot of other things, but that I keep on hand. It's so well done and I know firsthand that it's a labor of love. Because for a different organization, I shepherd the, the newsletter and it, I can bet. That as soon as you put one to rest, it's time to start the next. And it's always looming out there. But it's well appreciated by the community. So thank you both.
Thank you. Yes. Um, and the other, just maybe for everybody's kind of book of knowledge. The workflow is that, you know, we do not do the um, graphic design. We um, contract. We um, put an RFP out and we get a um, uh, a um, graphic design firm. To um, do the technical expertise as it relates to um, you know, all of the artwork and putting it together. We manage the content, but that again is also a, a very labor-intensive working with that, with that consultant. Or that outside vendor to put that piece together. And um, that, that's one more kind of piece. We don't do it in-house. If we had that skill set, we would be able to do that in-house, but we don't. And that, they are wonderful partners uh, as well. That company who was awarded that contract is called The Sauce. Out of um, uh, what city?
Monrovia.
Yeah. So we have a lead designer that we work with. He's basically on our team and uh, he works with. Probably thirteen other cities in the San Gabriel Valley and Los Angeles region. Park and Rec Departments and Community Services Departments to produce those community services guides. So uh, it's, it's not just an in-house and then we send it to the printer. There's a whole nother partner here with us. And that's our, our graphic design company. So you know, enough about that. But um, that I believe concludes. Um, our report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding the report? Yeah.
I remember last time we talked about like the, uh, I think it's called like the youth or teen advisory board for the library. And I know the applications were due in January. I was just wondering if anything happened there.
Linda, could you provide an update, please? Did you hear the question?
The, yeah, the tag team did meet um, on, it was my last day at work. That would have been Thursday. It was an absolute delight. I think we had. A dozen or so um, kids in there and they were all really engaged. Our um, teen librarian. Is incredible. Um, I believe that we had some people sign up already to assist with um, the open house. Um, I wasn't there, so I cannot confirm or deny the presence of any said teen volunteers. Um, but Kristin, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. There were at least twelve. I made her go in and take a picture like I was their mom. And I was like, oh, look, it's their first volunteer meeting. Oh, so I think uh, Kristin never probably about twelve or fifteen teens there, right?
There were sixteen. I just counted.
Oh, okay, okay. So um, yeah, it's wonderful to see them getting together and uh, getting off the ground. We're arranging um, different things that they can do in-house. And that volunteer group will also contribute to developing programs for their peers, assisting with. Programs throughout the library and making recommendations for the collections. So that way stays relevant to the interests and needs of teens today.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear all of that. I s- I think I saw some of them um, on Saturday helping with the craft. So that was.
Oh, I'm so glad. Yeah, good.
And there was a, a, a very nice young man, a part of the same team, right at the reception. Um, as you entered. He was sitting right out front and he was a little bit shy, but uh, when I asked him about his role, he spoke up. And and I just concur. This is so wonderful to have this up and running because we're empowering them to get their voices heard. And this, this age group is kind of a tough group. It's sometimes hard to, uh, you know, sustain their, their interest. Because they're off doing so many other things. And uh, so this is very powerful. So I, I'm going to look forward to hearing more about what, what they're doing at the library and they'll have great ideas. So.
Yeah, we're really excited to have them.
Sorry, Linda. The final comment I'll make to the board is that going forward, uh, Linda and her team will make sure that. Within our operational report that we have a brief specific to an update on the tag group's activity.
Okay.
So uh, this report is a sort of a rearview mirror report that we provide to you over the last thirty days. So Linda, please be certain that we, you know, provide, I think it, uh, we need to champion and make sure that we um, brag a lot. About this group and that we share all of the, the good contributions that they're making and that we keep you as a trustee and a board, uh, uh, our board. Um, trustees uh, apprised of, of their activity and contribution to library operations.
Great. Thank you. Any other board comments? All right, I opened up the item for public comments. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. There's no one here except our city councilman and, okay. Do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
All right. At this time, I'll bring the, this item back to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions for the question from the board? Prior to someone making a motion to approve.
No motion required.
To accept the, the.
Receive and file doesn't require.
Oh, we won't vote then. All right, thanks. Let's move on then. Uh, the ninth item on the agenda is Library Division Schedule of Fees. For Service for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Can we please have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and Library Manager Vera?
Uh, this uh, staff report begins on page fifteen of your packet. The subject of this uh, report and the title is Library Division Schedule of Fees for Service. The Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four. There's some background here that um, is written in the report, but I'd like to even kind of preface this item. And how it fits into the Community Services Department and how we prepare. And are getting ready to prepare our annual operating budget. Um, we, as a, as a Community Services Department, manage the majority. Or, no, I, that's not correct. We manage a, a broad range of user fees. That we collect revenues for. Um, in our department, the majority of those fees are managed. And um, and collected by the Recreation Division. But the Library Division also has fees that they charge for various different. Um, user activity and la- uh, excuse me, earlier in the month. When our Recreation Commission met, we made this exact same presentation to the Recreation Commission. To review the department-level user fees and as per municipal code. The people with authority to amend or adjust those fees. It begins with the uh, department head, who then utilizes their advisory body. As the citizen voice, okay, to get feedback on any recommendations that the department head. Will make to the ultimate approving authority, which is the city manager. So in preparation for C S D as a department and the two divisions. We are, I am guiding each commission through this staff report. Then by probably the end of the month or middle of February. The Acting City Manager will make final approval on these fees. And then we will build our operating budgets or our revenue targets based on these fees. So this is an exercise that um, San Marino and this department. Um, has never really managed their fees in a way where we have a full schedule. So you are looking at a, only a portion of what the Community Services fee schedule looks like. Because the library is just one section. So when this gets completed. There will be a Community Services Department Schedule of Fees and Charges that will get approved. And then they will be publicly facing on the city's website. And then all those fees that get listed in the Community Services Guide, this is the authoritative document. When we say we charge X amount for whatever user activity, this document guides us. And by council resolution, back to page fifteen. Um, pursuant to municipal code, uh, the, the library board duties. And library board duties, the board shall advise the city manager on budgetary matters. Uh, charging revenue or user fees is a budgetary matter. Because it's a, it, it's on the revenue side of an operating budget. Okay, so um. The last time fees were analyzed and modified were in September of twenty-one. After a comprehensive fee study was conducted by the Finance Department and a consulting group. Revenue, which was the consultant's name, two fees were increased as a, as a result of that study back in twenty-twenty-one. The library item reservation fee increased by from fifty cents to a dollar. And the replacement loss damage library material processing fee was increased. So two fees were adjusted in twenty-one. So today's item, uh, Linda Vera was the subject matter expert, if, if you will. She is here today to lead us through, lead you through a presentation. Uh, which happens to be the attachments that you have on page seventeen through seventeen. And eighteen. So with all that being said. So with all that being said, and I promise you, I will never give that long lengthy sort of kind of educational background. And I offer that up and I, I appreciate your time. But I would like to make sure that people that are new to being a trustee or serving, you know, in an alternate capacity, that we help and everybody understand how we got here and why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, and it is, it is a new, um, process internally. But every year you will see this item. If we don't have any recommended, uh, increases based on CIP, which is the Consumer Price Index, Finance Department might come and say, okay, everybody, we need to look at all of our fees and adjust based on inflation, based on competitive, you, you know, and, and various different things. That will be our full document and we will be bringing this once a year to both of our advisory bodies. So.
Appreciate the level of detail. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll never give this explanation, this lengthy explanation again. With that being said, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Linda to succinctly walk you through our recommendations.
Okay, so, um, we're, we're changing very little about our fees. Um, um, at our service thing. So interlibrary loan, um, are you guys familiar with interlibrary loan?
No, that's what, that was my only question.
Okay, great. Um, interlibrary loan is a process by which, um, library institutions get together and they agree to make their items available to members of other libraries. So, um, we may reach out to, um, that like, you know, the UC system or a Cal State. Uh, generally it's public libraries, um, trying to acquire materials that patrons are requesting that are, um, rare and difficult to acquire or just not within the scope of a public library collection. Because of that, um, you will see for some of these things, um, for instance, the fee for interlibrary loan, the current fees is cost, um, cost to lender. Uh, we don't set those fees. Those fees are set by the lending institution because we're just sort of the conduit through which, uh, you know, one of our community members is acquiring an item. Um, so we, we don't really have any control over that fee. Um, did that answer what interlibrary loan is and what your question was?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Um, the other things that we adjusted is that, uh, rather than charging a flat fee for certain items such as magazines, um, you know, where it said if you lose a magazine, we're going to charge you five dollars. Some magazines are really quite expensive. So, uh, we've decided to, and actually I don't know of any magazine that's five dollars anymore. Um, so we've decided to adjust that to, uh, more accurately reflect the cost of the item being replaced. Um, we're also, we had fees for reference books. Um, we had overdue fees and replacement fees, which, uh, didn't really make sense because reference items by nature do not circulate. Um, so we've removed that to tidy it up. And you'll see on here also miscellaneous piece. We have in our possession exactly one CD player. And we have one patron who comes in on Sunday and uses that CD player in-house. Um, I suspect that one day it will die and, um, we'll, we'll mourn its passing, but not replace it and not expect the one patron who currently uses that to replace the item. We'll just move on. Um, and yeah, oh yeah. And then the other, the other item that you'll see there is the overdue cost for a reference book, which again, since they don't circulate, it's a moot point. And should we find that we have reference books that are in hot demand, then I suspect we would just purchase a copy to circulate.
Linda, can I ask a question when, when you're finished?
Yes.
Is, would this be a good time?
This is a great time.
Okay. Uh, I don't know. You probably saw what I saw this past week at the Riverside Library. There was an article, uh, they called, it was titled, um, Library Fine Shaming. And apparently a lot of large library systems, Chicago, San Diego, New York, are eliminating, uh, overdue fines. Um, now they have a different demographic than, you know, than once, one community as such as San Marino. But, uh, you know, they, they looked at their budget, uh, that they, the monies that they raised through fines. And in Riverside, it turned out to be five thousand dollars a year. And they decided they weighed that against the cultural or educational loss that someone who couldn't take out a book because, or couldn't pay the fine and then they're not allowed to take out other books. I'm the first person to say that's not necessarily the case here in San Marino. Um, but I'm just curious if during the, the, the discussions, if that was ever raised, that we, we continue to, um, fine for, for when something is lost or damaged because we, we want it to be, um, something available to everyone. But well, do you think for eternity that will go on with library fines? I, I'm just, would like to, since that topic came up and you're presenting it in, in this month.
Uh, I would very much love to see our library go fine free. Um, I agree. It is punitive. It, um, library fines were originally designed as a way to encourage people to bring materials back to the library. Um, the idea was that, you know, if you charge a nominal fee, then, um, people will, will work to get items back to the library. And in that way, they would can, you know, they would be available for the, uh, for maximum number of people, um, rather than just sort of sitting at home. But, uh, what libraries that have gone fine free have found is that by eliminating those fines, they're actually able to recover more items. Because as you said, there's, you know, there's the shame factor. Um, but then also as it does, uh, you know, those, those fees will reach a certain threshold and people, and not all community members have the means to pay those fines. So what happens is they just stop going back to your library and they move on to another library. Uh, I was really surprised as we looked through here to find that no library in the San Gabriel Valley has moved forward yet with going fine free. So, uh, Deborah, if you'd like us to be the maverick institution and go out there and set the trend for our community, you know, that is something, certainly something that I would love to look at in the future.
Can I ask a question, Linda? So th- there's a difference, I think, between having fines and then prohibiting people who owe money from checking out for their books. Do we do that? If you owe money, are you not allowed to check out any books? Says the guy, who turns his books on time always.
What's the policy?
So the, um, the way fines work and the, the reason why it can, it can become prohibitive is that, um, there's a, there is, the threshold is five dollars. So once your account hits five dollars, then, um, you, we ask that you bring your, your account balance under five dollars before you can continue checking out. But let's say you have three kids, um, and each account has a balance. Or let's say, you know, you, you do have a child who's a precocious reader and, um, they have a bunch of books and they're all overdue. You, it is not uncommon for, um, people to have balances that, um, exceed that five dollar threshold rather quickly. Um, so e- especially as the, that punitive system does not encourage the return of those books, you know, uh, someday it would be nice to, to move away from that traditional model.
This, it, it seems like this is something we can look into, um, just, but I, I think we would need more information in terms of, bless you, of, of how many people are not able to, to, uh, check out books because of fines that they owe. Um, and this maybe could be a project for you, vice chair Sidoun, to look into.
I think I, I would like to recommend that we take, we take this on and we bring this back next month.
Sure.
With, um, an analysis and then a recommendation.
Okay.
Um, now that we, uh, I, I really appreciate that you've brought this up, but it's really an, an operating, um, guideline and then operating, you know, procedure policy. Uh, and, um, it would, I think it warrants a little more analysis and assessment and then a recommendation from us as we do a little more.
That, that's fine. I, I would also like to have Vice Chair Sidoun, because researching this just in terms of what, uh, what other sensibilities are, because I think in this community, there's going to be a pushback. If we say, there's no more fines at the library, there's going to be.
Right.
Concern. So I think you guys doing your, your research would be terrific on this and we can discuss it.
Yeah, and we'll bring it back as a staff report.
Great.
Next month. And we will.
Yeah, and, and.
Call Deborah.
Given that no other community in the SGV has taken this route, we thought it was probably safest to, um, continue with the status quo for now. Um, I, I will add that, um, it's projected to bring in ten thousand in revenue this year. I don't remember, uh, what the figures were, were, uh, pre-pandemic. Um, but you know, there, there's also too, there's not just the, the money factor, but there's a psychological factor that's, you know, not, there's multiple angles to, to why libraries choose a, to go fine free.
Okay, good. Let's explore all that. We'll, we'll discuss it next month. Um, any other questions from the board on the schedule of fees? Anyone else? Yeah, okay. Opening up this for public comments, um, no one's here to speak on this. So I'm going to skip ahead. Were there any public comment requests submitted electronically?
No.
Of course not. Uh, any other comments or questions from the board? Because we are going to need a mo- motion on this.
My move to support, um, staff's recommendation to the, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, schedule fees for services.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Terrific. Well, call please.
Trustee Chen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Person Sidoun.
Yes.
And Chair Person De Meyer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution? No.
That's if you guys received anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, sorry. Anybody get anything?
No.
Nothing? Okay, great. Uh, all right, that's it then. This meeting is adjourned at uh, nine oh four until our next meeting on February twenty-seventh at eight AM here in the bathroom. Thank you, everyone.